All the other on the list, please.
My congratulations.
President of the United States of America and to the Republic of where it stands, one nation under Adam, in the digital with liberty and justice for all.
Dave, go with your little call, please.
Thank you. President. Vice President Everard.
Here.
Give it down to the basis for the same. Sir.
Yes. Mr. Everard. Fifty lady. Mister.
Yeah.
Fifty one word.
Yeah. Yes. Can you hear that? You can hear that?
What?
Yep, can you hear me okay? Hello?
You're us?
Yeah, barely. I can barely hear you. Let me try calling down my phone. I'm on my iPad. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, you're fine, but yeah, you can't hear us.
Well, you're coming through better now, so let me, let's just try this for a little bit.
Okay, sounds good. All right, four point O, public comments. We'll go with Ron. Express the, someone has a public comment. They could not be here, so we're going to read their public comment here.
And there's, that's a public comment. Well, we've got three times this evening. There's public comment for general material and then there's the public hearing.
This is the general material. So, so comment from Ray Eisenbrenner to, in the letter says as follows. Dear Christine Lamantegna, I am writing this letter to express my support of the November 5th, 2024 limiting rate proposition. I am in favor of increasing the property tax in 2026 for the McHenry County Conservation District after the taxes that are lowered in 2026 due to the district paying off a large loan. Today, the taxes on an average $300,000 home that goes towards the district are $209 a year. In 2026, the district will pay off a large loan which they make payments toward out of these funds. If this proposition on November 5th fails in 2026, the average homeowner will pay 115 instead of $209 in taxes. If the proposition passes in 2026, the average homeowner will pay 142 to the district instead of $209. To take home message, if the proper proposition passes, number one, in 2026, your, your new district tax will be $142 per year. Two, in 2024, your tax to the district was $290 per year. Three, you are paying $67 less to the district in 2026 than in 2024. This proposition is a great compromise because taxes will go down and at the same time, the district will receive a small increase in funds to further the management of natural resources and recreational opportunities. Sincerely, Ray Eisenbrenner, retired ID NR District Wildlife Biologist. Great, thank you. Any other public comment as far as general?
General, anybody online for general comment?
Doesn't sound like it, so. I guess I just want to make a quick comment. I want to thank everybody for all the support and generosity during my couple times and I really appreciate it, so thank you. Okay, we'll move on to presentations.
Andy.
Yeah.
We have Jim Serbin, his department, CPAs. That's the only firm that did the audit.
Yep.
He's remote, did a presentation like last year. Just a little background, CPG is one of the largest CPA firms in the nation. Renowned, they're known with their expertise, a current over 200 government agencies, some of the biggest park districts in the nation. And their partners sit on lots of the kind of guiding boards for government accounting, the ACPA, GFPA, IGFPA, all those things, all of their critiques. And then just quickly, as in prior years, I went very smoothly, clean, a lot of those, Jim will tell you, and that's a lot to do with our outstanding accounting manager, Jr. Spring, our accounting teams, I just want to thank them. They just do an amazing job, makes things go really, really smoothly. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Serbin.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks everyone for your time here tonight. I really do appreciate it. Want to start by thanking Elizabeth and Andy, Jean and the entire staff for all of their assistance throughout the entire audit process. They're always, you know, super prepared for us and they have everything ready for us. Makes the, our job a lot easier, so I want to thank them for that. They were able to answer all our questions, get us all the information we needed and get the reports out on time, so thank them very much for that. What I'll do is what I typically do, and that's kind of go through the annual comprehensive financial report, just a high level overview of that. Then I'll talk about our auditors' communication to the board. That's kind of, kind of our report card, you could say, and I'll go through that as well and be able to be happy to answer any questions that you might have after that. So I'll start with the annual comprehensive financial reports. That's going to be the bigger report. Want to go through the table of contents first, so just give you a, just a high level overview of what's in the report. So table of contents, you can see there's basically three main sections. There's the introductory financial, which is the main part of the report, and then the statistical section. I want to go through the financial section, the independent auditors' reports on pages one through four, so I'll talk about that in a minute. Then after that's management discussion and analysis on pages, MDA, pages one through 16. Andy prepares that. I'll also talk real briefly about that. And then after that are what we call the basic financial statements. So the, the basic financial statements are what we give an opinion on. And when I go over the independent auditors' report, I'll kind of tell you what we do with the other information in this report, so just keep, understand that that our opinion's on the basic financial statements. And you'll see the government-wide financial statements start off the report. The statement of net position is your balance sheet, and then the statement of activities is your income statement. So this is the consolidated financial statements for the district, so it's going to have all your funds in governmental activities column. You don't have any business type activities. Everything are governmental funds, so you just have one column there. And there's some summarized comparative information from the prior year also on these two schedules. Statement of activities, like you said, is your income statement. After that then are the fund financial statements. So these are the governmental funds. These have a short-term focus, so they don't have any capital assets, no long-term debt. It's just focused on current spendable resources, similar to how you budget and also how you review the, the monthly financial information that you do receive. So these are presented by major funds, and then all the non-major funds, of which you only have two non-major funds, they're combined and aggregated into one column. And then on pages nine and 11 is a reconciliation that kind of shows you how you get from that short-term focus to the long-term focus. After that, on pages 12 through 38 are the notes to the financial statements. A lot of great additional information that supports the basic financial statements and should be read in conjunction with it. After that, then on the second page of the table of contents, we start off with the required supplementary information or RSI. I might refer to it as. This has a budget versus actual report for your general fund and then some additional schedules on your participation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, as well as your retiree health or OPEB fund. This is the accounts for your health insurance subsidy for retirees. After that, then are the combining and individual fund financial statements and schedules. So these have a lot more detailed schedules that include also budget versus actual information as well. And then after that are the stat section. So you'll see there's five basic sections. There's financial trends, then there's revenue capacity, debt capacity, demographic and economic information, and then operating information. So this has a lot of great 10-year trend data, so it's, it's pretty interesting stuff, probably more interesting to the non-accountant than the rest of the financial statements, but kind of puts the financial statements in the proper context. And then there's some SEC information that's right after the stat section. You'll see that's labeled unaudited. I'll talk about that briefly too when we talk about the independent auditors' report, which is what we will go to next. So if you want to look at page one, so the very first part of the financial section, and let me scroll down and get down to that. So I kind of tell you every year, the independent auditors' report, this is the report that we're responsible for. Management's responsible for the rest of the annual comprehensive financial report. And you can see. Deals. And do you, it's real hard to hear you guys, so I don't know if you had a question or not, or if you want me to keep going.
Keep going.
Okay. Got it. So on page one, the very first section are our opinions. And on the first, the second paragraph is the opinion paragraph. Again, this year we issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we can provide to the district. So says in our opinion that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, the financial position and changes in financial position of the district in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. That paragraph right after that, the third paragraph, what that's basically saying is we had a, we had a corporate restructuring. And because you had some summarized comparative information in those government-wide financial statements, it's basically just saying the old corporation, the old restructured, the old pre-restructured corporation audited the previous information. So it's, it's the same company and everything. It was just a legal restructuring, but you know, legal and quality control wanted us to add that paragraph. So if you're, if you're wondering what that means, that's, that's kind of what it means, so. And then on page three of the independent auditors' report, this page kind of tells you what we did with the rest of the information. So the basic financial statements we gave our unmodified opinion on, the required supplementary information, we do some limited procedures, we do read it, make sure it's consistent with the basic financial statements, but not enough to give an opinion on it. So that's what we explained in that first paragraph. The supplementary information is the combining and individual fund statements and schedules. We give what we call an in relation to opinion on this information, so in relation to the basic financial statements, it is not materially misstated. So I, an unmodified opinion on that. And then the other information is the introductory and stat section, and then that SEC information that we talked about. We don't give an opinion on this information. However, we do read the information, make sure it's not materially inconsistent with the basic financial statements or otherwise materially misstated. If it was, we would go back to you guys and ask you to correct it, and then if it wasn't corrected, then we would, we would communicate that to the, to the board. So no issues with that. Everything was, everything agreed and was consistent with the basic financial statements. So right after the independent auditors' report is the management discussion and analysis. This is prepared by Andy. This is his favorite thing to do each year is prepare this, and I'm being facetious. But it, it does provide a great overview of the district's financial position and the changes in financial position. Point out any significant changes or trends that might be occurring. It does have some three-year comparative data that you can't find elsewhere in the report. So I encourage you, if you want to read one thing in the report, and the reports with the MDA, everything is over 100 pages. If you want to read one thing, read the MDA, because it's a good overview of the district's finances. After that, I'm going to jump into the governmental fund financial statements, starting on page seven and eight. So these are the short-term focused financial statements that I talked about. No capital assets, no debt. This is how you budget or how you review reports. This is basically what you're looking at here. So just want to highlight the general fund. That's the very first column. And on page eight down in fund balance, this, so this is like retained earnings, if it was a corporate financial statements, you'll see there's some, the unrestricted amounts are considered committed, assigned or unassigned. And you'll see the unassigned amount is about $2.4 million. Right up above that two lines, we show a sign for subsequent year's budget because the budget was budgeted for a deficit. And if you take those two amounts divided by the current year expenditures, you can, you have about, about a four-month reserve for four-month reserve of assigned and unassigned amounts. And then on page 10, again, this is your statement of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance for governmental funds. Again, highlighting the general fund, which is that first column, you'll see about two-thirds of the way down, there's an excess of revenues over deficiencies. You'll see that's about $51,000. Last year was about 440,000, I believe. Actually, prior year was about 662,000, so revenue is slightly above expenditures. Then there was a large transfer out this year that you didn't have in the prior year, so then the net decrease in fund balance was about $823,000 after the, the transfer out. And then the last thing I'll talk about in the annual comprehensive financial report will be in the RSI section. And I'll kind of go over the two schedules related to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. The first one is on page 40. And this is going to be your schedule of employer contributions. So this has a nine-year history of your contributions, what you're expected to contribute, what you actually contributed, which both equal each other for all nine years. And then it, there's a contributions as a percentage of covered payroll, that very last line, that kind of gives you an idea of what your pension burden is. So take the contributions divided by the covered payroll and the, obviously the lower percentage amount is the better, the better amount. So, but you'll see that percentage has steadily decreased over the last nine years. It was around 12% 2016, 2017. It's down to about nine and a half percent now. And that is a result mainly of, of how well-funded I am around this, and you can kind of see that funded information on pages 41 and 42. So this is the scheduled changes in the employer's net pension liability and related ratios. So basically what these two pages show you is basically your funded status of the report of the, of the plan. You'll see it's got information for the last nine years. And on page 41, the very last line is the net pension liability or asset. So you take the total pension liability that the actuary calculates, that very first section on page 41, subtract out the planned fiduciary net position. So these are the assets you have entrusted IMRF to pay the liabilities, and then the difference between the two is going to be your net pension liability or asset. You'll see for 2023, it was a liability of about two and a half million, which was a decrease of a million and a half from the previous year, mainly due to good investment returns in calendar year 2023. And also there are a little bit of favorable differences between expected and actual experience as well, so that got the funded ratio up to about 91%. So, and you can see over the nine years, it's, it's, the funded ratio steadily increased and it's, you know, you're hovering right around 100%. So that, that's all I have for the annual comprehensive financial report. I want to talk about the auditors' communication to the board of trustees report. That's that smaller report. And I'll start with the table of contents there as well. And there's, you'll notice on pages two through four, there's some required communication that we have to have with the board each year. This is required by auditing standards. Pretty routine communication again this year. Didn't have any delays with the audit, no disagreements with management. Didn't have any new accounting pronouncements to implement. There was one new pronouncement that was effective for this year. It was called subscription-based information technology arrangements, which is a fancy word for saying basically software licenses and specifically recording any software licenses greater than one year. So we didn't note any significant software licenses greater than one year. In fact, the vast majority of them were basically year-to-year licenses, so didn't have any impact on the district. After that, then on page five, our adjusting journal entries. So these are audit entries that we found as part of the audit process. We only had one entry. You can see that on page five, not real material from an audit standpoint, so. And then we also had no, what we call past adjusting journal entries. These would be entries that were deemed to be immaterial, but above a certain floor, we have to communicate that to the board. We didn't have any past adjustments at all. So everything that needed to be corrected was corrected. And then finally, last thing I'll talk about is the management letter that starts right after those adjusting journal entries on page five. And page seven basically says in writing that you had no material weaknesses. You also did not have any significant deficiencies or any deficiencies as well. So great job by Andy and his staff. You know, we only had one adjustment that was immaterial and then no, no other comments, no deficiencies at all. So like I said, another great job by Andy, being well-prepared, having everything fully adjusted before we got out. So that is all I have on those two reports, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have. Hopefully I didn't ramble on too long.
Oh, actually, it's pretty good.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
You did not mention internal audits. Is that part of auditing or your opinion about internal audits?
Can you hear that, Jim?
Yeah, well, an internal audit, the internal audit function is usually an auditor that's, would have been hired by the district. And they, they do, you know, so you would hire like someone like me or someone with audit experience that would be an internal auditor, and basically they do auditing as an employee of the district, but then they typically will report their findings. In your case, it would be to Elizabeth. You know, they're not going to report the findings to, to Andy because he's the head of the finance department, so they would, you know, basically report to, to Elizabeth. But that, that's what internal auditing is, is just having like an auditor that's kind of in-house that does some of the things that we do, but also a lot of like control testing and compliance testing and things like that, too. So hopefully that answered your question.
Well, at one time, the district did have some issues with internal auditing, and it was mentioned in the auditors' report. So my guess, everything squared away and everything's going well, and it wouldn't even be anything noticed by you.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep, we didn't. Like I said, we didn't, we didn't have any deficiencies this year. Just the, we've, we noted the one adjustment that was, that was made.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments? Very good job, Andy, again.
But again, the accounting manager has an awful lot to do with everything that goes on in the accounting department, making sure we're ready and prepared, so. Who knows to her and her team.
Well, I, I will say too, it starts at the top, and Andy does a great job, Jean and the, and then the board as well. I think your commitment and the role that we've been placed with the treasurer, doing that, again, audit that we do of our invoices month later, check on things, verify checks and balances, also with our park district risk management agency that we're a part of. I mean, we look to high risk management standards and.
Well, thank you, Jim. I appreciate it. As always, you did a great job.
Yep. Thanks everyone for your time tonight. Have a good night.
Yep, thank you, thank you. We'll move on to 5.2A, capital asset management. Not gonna start on that.
Going to introduce, we're going to start off with the capital asset management plan, our camp plan for bricks and mortar. And Amy Peters, our planning and development manager is going to lead this part of the presentation.
Well, thank you. I know everyone. I get to be the spokesperson for this project, but it's a lot of people, again, on the team to put this together. And for those that don't know, a quick note of what makes a capital improvement, what, what makes a project this list and not some other lists is usually just complexity and dollar amount. So those are the, I think those are the biggest highlights. So there, there are trails, there are roads, there are parking lots, there are facilities, buildings, you know, site improvements, again, on a larger, larger scale. And we have focused them on, basically maintenance for the last more than several years. So not a lot of new stuff. This is just what it takes to take care of, of what we have. So before we go into what we're asking you to consider more, the upcoming years, I wanted to just give you a little bit of highlights of the things that we do have on the docket right now that we're in mad dash construction, full, full steam ahead. So Elizabeth, if you would click, this was the list of, and is the list for 2025 of the projects that we're tackling. And as you can see, we have regional trail projects, we have the conservation areas, we have building structures demolitions, and we have improvements. And so what is in highlighted in the orange are the things that we have accomplished already this year. Everything else that's on that list is in progress or in front of you in this month's meeting to approve bids. So if you go to the next slide, these are just, again, some before and afters of those, of those projects, just to give you an idea of, you know, what we're, what we're accomplishing. So this was an example of one of the sections of the Prairie Trail that we completed. This is the one that's in Glacial Park. And we were able to, with funding, not only take care of ADA issues, we updated signage, we made it safer by putting in a pedestrian beacon. So again, trying to stretch that dollar, that maintenance dollar to make more improvements. This is an example of, we have this historic head theater that's at our Pleasant Valley location. And again, seemingly not major, but it gets a huge amount of use and we want to preserve it. It's gorgeous. So we just added some stonework or we can't get grass to grow. This was also a collaboration with the foundation. There was a donation made. So again, just making those dollars go a little bit further with the relationships that we have. So conservation area. Again, another highlight, we did this for several of the historic buildings this year, but just did the exterior painting project. So we did Powers' Walker House. Again, we have a few more on the docket with our roof and that sort of thing, but again, just an example of what we're doing. So what's next? So what we're talking to you today about is 26 next year and then 27, 28. But what I wanted mostly to focus on would be next year. And so this is a document that you all should have been given, and I'm going to go quickly through just 26. And then if you have questions or if there's something specific that you want to pull out, I don't have images necessarily of all of these yet because we're, you know, we're just proposing them. So format is still categorized, where we can talk about regional trails as a group, go into the different categories. But next year, we would start to do number four. It's the Prairie Trail Link. It's another section. Again, this is a 26-mile home trail. We can't. Again, this is a twenty-six mile long trail. We can't read it's twenty-six, thirty years old in sections. So we have to do it in those smaller pieces. This would be the Edgewood to Bull Valley Road is next, and we have this on a schedule of when it was put in. Our, our team goes out and annually doubles checks, make sure if anything got worse. You know, do we have other things that need to take care of? So priority-wise, it fluctuates a little bit, but that's our next one. And again, that's a big project. So first year is evaluating it, doing a construction document plans, whether we can do those in-house or we need an engineer, depends on the complexity of it. The following year is that, then we'd have a cost estimate. Then, you know, that goes along with the plan following years and when we would have construction. So that's why you see a lot of those big projects in consecutive years. We have a bridge, we have a boardwalk. So our Bogger Bog site is in there in Bull Valley. It has a boardwalk. It's been in, for us, we were just talking about it, at least fifteen years now. It needs some deck replacement. It was put in on peer system so that it was not harmful. The impact on the wetland community and the bog there, that needs to be reset in some places. So the number is a hundred and thirty. It's not the entire thing. It's about sixty linear feet, but it's, it's just time-consuming and it's materials. The two in the roadways, parking lots, actually are the parking lot and entrance drive here at Brookdale as well as Marengo Ridge. Those have been deferred for a number of years. Again, just because of the circumstances that we're in financially. What we're asking for here is these are just cutout replacements. Eventually, we'll need to completely replace and resurface the entire area. But again, trying to push that on as long as we can. No one likes to talk about boardwalks or parking lots. It's not really very fun, but we need, but we need them. So in that case, that's why we pushed out the longer, you'll see the larger number in twenty-twenty-eight to, to do that work. The last one in that phase or in that page is the hollows, and that is a demolition. And that is the residence. As you come in, it's right there at our, at the main parking lot. It's vacated just recently. They moved up into Glacial Park. So again, it's one of those things that we've had on a list that John Kramer's been, you know, keeping an eye on. And now the time is, there's repairs that are more than what it would cost to take it down. And so again, just get that off of that view shed. I will say in twenty-twenty-six, Silver Creek, it's the Prairie View Education Center. So this year, one of our projects is, we're hoping to hire a architect team and a structural engineer to evaluate the exterior stairs. And anybody's been to Pleasant Valley, they're very prominent stone retaining walls that are on the front of back of the building, but the front of the entrance to it. So those are unsafe. We have them closed up currently, so we do need to, they are urgent. Again, probably a two-year process. Get, get a design. Next year, we'll implement whatever the repair that we decide is best. The other two are more structural. Glass Valley Visitor Center. Again, it's a fire suppression system. It's just hard to believe that that building is fifteen years old already, so addressing that, getting that up to code. The Region One Shop. Not everybody is. We've, we've been working on that progressively. We took down a building that was adjacent to it last year. We put a new roof on it this year. It needs a new siding next year because now we've made the commitment that we're going to keep that as the main facility for that region. And that, those are the highlights for this upcoming this year. Does anybody have any specific questions on any of that? Do you want me to take you out further or is that too far away?
What's the amount you're projecting for that total amount?
Well, we have it at seven fifty.
Oh, okay. For all your camp projects for next year?
For all of the new ones proposed, yes. So the, those first two columns are the the rollovers, those are projects that are in projects now, so that six-ten roughly is, is carryover from this year. And we may not need any of that. Like I said, we're hoping, everything is in motion and we should be able to finish that up and those would be closed out. You know, in, in this year. So then, yes, the answer is we, what we have proposed, what I just ran through totals the seven fifty.
And that includes the district-wide tenure comprehensive plan we discussed as well. And then there's an unanticipated, just based on, again, not used unless the E T used it with overages or whatever.
If you go to the next page, this shows the projects that we have grants for.
Got you.
So those are separated out, even though they are still, and sometimes there's crossover, right? It starts off not as a grant project because we need to address it. But we try to find, so the Prairie Trail are, they're perfect examples of that. We know that we have that maintenance upcoming. You know, we know that we can submit for a grant. You don't know that you're going to get it, but it, you know, then we'll transfer it over. So it shows, these are all of the projects that we have currently that do have grants that are coming in. And so that's fantastic on this page to show, you know, how much more we can get done with.
I have a question on grants. I was looking at twenty-nine, the Hebron Trail. And it's, I see it's up to a couple of years yet, but can you give multiple grants for the same project?
It depends on the grants, but yes. And different phases of, of it. So sometimes they, with, with that particular one, we need, we need a engineering. We need a phase-one engineering just because of the railroad and road. It makes it a lot more complicated than some of our other repairs or replacements of the trails. So yes, that's what we would, that would then open up more opportunities for more grants. Without that, you know, it's, it's one of those things. Sometimes you have to put a little bit of your own money and, you know, elbow grease into it first, and then you can have more opportunities for grants.
Yeah, yeah. I was just surprised at two thousand twenty-eight cost. But, you know, I have no pulse on, you know, how much it, but I'm familiar with the, the area and it's close to the tracks.
Yes, so that, that has just the complexities that nothing else does. So then those numbers were used and we took some liberties and added a few percentages to. The closest that we have as a comparison is the Oak Street Crossing in Crystal Lake. If you can imagine that, where part of it will have to be a sidewalk, some of it will have to be a railroad crossing with the arms. So, so we use that as our starting point for, again, a projected, you know, three-year-out project cost.
Look, I'll just say that I think this is conservative even, and I appreciate that. I'm sure the board does, too. And you know, it, it goes a long way to have a few years out and to have these projects on paper and shovel-ready because these grants come up sometimes and they go away pretty quick. And if we don't have our paperwork and our plan in place, we can lose out on a lot of months. So I just kudos to the staff. They seem to always do a great job and being able to apply for these grants. But also having things ready and hopefully not staying up till eleven fifty-nine and trying to get stuff in by the time of deadline. But we do support that, so thanks. Any other comments? Looks good. Thank you. Okay, the big guy's next. How you doing, Ed?
Doing okay.
Natural Capital Improvement Plan. Tell us about that.
So a couple of things to understand upfront is we've split at the district our, our camp, our capital asset plan into really two areas for two good reasons. And Amy did a great job just presenting about the bricks and mortar. But the district also has tens of million big dollars in assets. It is the land itself. And so the Natural Capital Improvement Plan really deals with what happens on the land that is not developed. So you see two separate plans that come to you. We first began doing these in two thousand nineteen. And they were five-year plans, so in two thousand twenty-four, we really completed that first five-year cycle. So what I'm going to present tonight is really the end of that cycle. And next year, you'll see a new Natural Capital Improvement Plan will be developed by Gabe and John Peters and the rest of the natural resource management staff. And it will include the next five years, Natural Capital Improvement Plans. So we update them yearly, even though it's a five-year plan. And there's a couple of reasons for that, just as with Perks and Mortar, opportunities may come up that we're not there when you develop the plan. So you may be able to take advantage of a grant. You may be able to take advantage of changes in the district's land base that allow you to do a project. So we have a rolling project schedule that is changed each year, but it's based off that original five-year plan. We match our camp requests to grants whenever possible. And I think Amy pointed this out, and you'll see this in all aspects of the district's operation. You budget for what you believe the cost will be for that project, and then you work as hard as you can to find outside money to also finance it. And I'm pretty happy to say that a large percentage of the camp projects we presented as part of the budget over the last five years actually wound up being completely funded outside of camp. So we have the actual amount we're going to start with, that is a camp request, and then we're able to apply for a grant. And in many cases, that grant will provide all of the funding. This doesn't, of course, include equipment, replacement or vehicles or technology that comes out of different pots of money. But that is always being updated each year across the district. And it covers projects on ninety-nine percent of the land that the district owns that is not developed. So you'll see the paper version of the Natural Capital Improvement Plan with the regular budget. And I would encourage you all when it comes out and you receive it to read it. It's really a much thicker document than just the projects. And it explains the difference between bricks and mortar capital and natural capitals. And why you often have, why you have two different approaches to those two types of capitals. So again, when it, when it comes out along with the rest of the, the budget, I would encourage you to read it and, and ask staff questions. So we have three projects that we'll be bringing to you tonight. Two are reallocations. They're projects that we're currently in, and we will partly complete them this year. And we're reallocating funds that we requested last year to finish them. And I'll explain why both projects were not finishing, we couldn't finish them this year. The first is at Glacial Park. And you'll see partners in all of these because we, conservation is really about partnerships these days. And we have two partners in this project, Openlands and the Friends of Hatpatac National Wildlife Refuge. The layout is, the Openlands purchased one hundred acres that borders directly to Glacial Park. And then the Friends of Hatpatac applied for and received a nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant, congressional grant from then Congressman Lauren Underwood to do the wetland and prairie and savanna restoration on that project. The district has about thirty-five acres that directly adjoin it in Glacial Park. So we were able to cover both projects under a single permit. And we budgeted for our end, which was a hundred thousand dollars. We'll spend about twenty-five thousand of that this year, and we'll reallocate about seventy-five thousand to complete it next year. So if you look at the project as a whole, the district's contribution is about ten percent of what the overall project is going to be, and nine hundred and seventy-five thousand incoming from federal funding. We were, we had hoped to finish this whole project this year, but both areas are lowlands. And we all know what the first few months of the year was like. So they have finally dried out. There were some hurdles in permitting because it was a joint permitting, but that's been taken care of at this point. And the ground is finally starting to dry out. So we'll complete what we can this winter, and then when we move into hopefully a more dry season next year, we'll finish the dirt work and we'll finish the tile work and get everything done.
What type of work are you trying to do? Just mainly?
Yeah, well, there are two, two headwater streams on the Openlands property. And a third one that is partially on their property and partially in Glacial Park. And all three of them have water streams are very narrow streams, about the size of your tabletop. And they're the streams that feed Nippersink Creek and all other larger bodies of water having. And really, the quality of the water that comes through those streams defines the quality of the water in the larger bodies of water like Nippersink Creek. All three of those streams were modified over the past hundred and seventy years. Two were straightened to facilitate agricultural production back in the nineteenth century. And the third one was tunnelled, and you may hear that term from time to time. Tunneling is when you're able to take an entire stream in place underground in a tile, so it's removed from the surface. And there's a number of reasons for doing that. If a stream meanders across a piece of property, it makes it very difficult to produce crops in it because you have to work around all those meanders. So if you're able to straighten it, move it to the edge of the property or at least to the center, it means that the, the fields that you're working with are much easier to work with. In some cases, if you could tunnel it and remove it completely underground, then you're able to work that entire piece above it. These were never good crop lands. They're hybrid soils. They produce in very, very dry years and they don't produce in very wet years. The soils are potent muck, so they can produce okay if they're well under, underlaying with tiles. But only when the weather prevents that, you don't have a really rainy year like we had this year. So in the past, when these fields were in production, they were hit a mess.
Yes, I didn't think you could do anything with that stuff.
Well, you can grow good wetlands with it. And, and really, you know, think of it as the kidneys of the landscape. It's where all the water runs down to. It's where it gets filtered before it goes into the streams. So that's a good way to look at it. The other place is, is flood control sink. So Glacial Park and all that muck that's in Glacial Park is about eight hundred acres. When we have very serious rains, those areas fill up. So if you live downstream of Glacial Park and Fox, Fox Laker Spring Grove, most of that floodwater upstream is being held in those wetlands and it's being metered back into the stream slowly instead of being pushed in very quickly. So there's a flood control measure that goes with it. And that's what you should, you know, about hold muck. Also, very dark black soil. And the reason for that is when a sap is requiring water, the plant parts go decomposed because they're wet all the time. And so you, we've actually dug in hold muck and found tamarack blocks that are eleven thousand years old on the bottom of the muck because they just, they don't decompose because it's such a, an, an environment where you don't get a lot of oxygen in there. So we will be spending about twenty-five thousand for brush control this winter when the ground is frozen and the rest will be poured. There's some slight tile removal. There, in, in our part of the project, there are no tiles. There's a part, part of one that runs off property, at the Openlands property. But we have a piece of the straightened Nippersink that we never closed during the original Nippersink project because at that time, it was a common border between us and the property to the north, which was privately owned. That's since been purchased by Openlands, and they're fine with closing that piece of the ditch. So we're going to be able to recreate the wetlands that once existed in that portion of Glacial Park. Next one. And the second one is also in Glacial Park. And again, a prairie and wetland restoration at the extreme east end of the park. This one will spend about a hundred thousand dollars this year on seed. And we'll complete the rest of that next season, so we'll be reallocating sixty-three thousand two hundred. In this case, we'll be receiving a grant for the whole amount when it's finished reimbursed from a federal program which we partnered with Wisconsin V N R on. So there is an animal called a rusty patch bumblebee, which is, if you're into bees, it's a, it's a pretty bee. And it's one of the first bees to be listed as federally endangered. Now, if you're in McHenry County, we have identified twenty populations this year, but we are at literally the epicenter of what's left of the populations. McHenry and Lake and Walworth County, where the majority of the populations are being found. And then as you move out from that, they decline, decline, decline until you're in an area where there are none at all. So this project was specifically designed to recreate habitat for this bumblebee in Wisconsin and in Illinois. So we're able to partner out of state because it was a federal grant. And staff worked very hard on this grant and, and that interstate cooperation for it. The way it works is this bumblebee needs prairie for flowers, for food. But it also needs to have woodlands where it builds its nest. But it also needs to have woodlands where it builds its nests. So we're doing savanna restoration and prairie restoration on this particular parcel. Uh, it's about a hundred acres, uh, and it'll be at the extreme east end of the park. And it's surrounded by land that we've already worked on. So this one will be funds going out but returning once the project is completed through the grant cycle. Yeah, yes.
It's so interesting because last night at the water forum, they had a concept called green infrastructure. And literally planting plants, you know, native plants with their long roots for better soil or water retention on the soils because of so much runoff these days from these, the, the way the storm events are happening lately. But so really, you could actually be improving water retention as well.
We absolutely are. And the district was very closely involved with the county when they first developed their green infrastructure plan many years ago. And you're absolutely right. Um, the storm events are becoming um different. Um, there are more of them and they are of a more intense duration. Um, the hundred year event is now becoming the fifty year event. And the five hundred year event is becoming a hundred year event in terms of um precipitation. And so um the best place to hold that really and not impact agriculture and not impact um development and people's homes is to try to put that water where naturally it would go in the first place, which is along the flood plains and in the wetlands. And so the district has been involved in those kinds of projects for a long time. Um, and we hold a lot of water on our sites. Some of it is metered back into streams, some of it filters back down into the underground aquifers for drinking water. So this project will have multiple benefits. Um, it'll have habitat for the, the rusty pet bumblebee, which occurs next to this site in Glacial Park. And it also will have those kinds of benefits as well on it. So that's the second one. And then the third and last one.
Uh, one quick question. On that one, when you get the money reimbursed, where does that money go back?
If it comes out of camp, it goes back into camp.
Goes back into.
Right. If it comes out of the Natural Resource Special Revenue Fund, when it's reimbursed, it goes back into that fund. And so we're able to keep these funds rolling with reimbursements and be able to utilize them for future projects. So um neither of those projects um has a bulk of, of money coming from the district's regular budget. Um, a lot of it's coming from sources outside McHenry County for grants. Uh, the, we brought this to the board recently, the development of a Kishawaki Corridor um mitigation bank. So our current mitigation bank, which is located at Glacial Park, is for the Fox River Basin. So it, there's unavoidable impacts to wetlands or streams in that area. And um someone has to mitigate for them. They have to rebuild streams or rebuild wetlands somewhere else as part of their project. They're able to buy those credits at the district's bank. Um, and we work very closely with M I dot and I dot and our own internal staff where we have to provide those credits ourselves when we're doing development projects on, on district site. But we'd like to develop one in another watershed as well because this allows the credits um in that watershed to be used for projects that are occurring in that watershed. And that's typically when someone does an impact, they like, the core likes them. They have the, the impact relieved closer to where the project is being. So we've done some, we have some engineering being done on the site now. It's at Kishawaki Corridor Conservation Area. Uh, we know that that engineering should come back before this, this budget year ends. But we always know that engineering will often give you other questions that have to be answered. So we're budgeting this figure because when you do a mitigation bank, you have to come to very, very high standards in order to sell the credits for vegetation, for hydrology, for wildlife. And we want to make sure that before we invest district dollars in a site, it be a mitigation bank, that it has a high probability of success. So that's why we do a lot of the upfront engineering like this ahead of time. So a single credit, as you know from selling them in the past couple of years, uh, can go for as high as over a hundred thousand dollars. So the investment in engineering is worthwhile. And those will be the three camp projects that you see coming from our end of the operation this year.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any other questions? She'll ask you.
Excellent.
All right. Excellent. Uh, let's go to side point three, discuss the proposition twenty twenty four. Uh, you want to show that video?
I do, yes. The board, as you know, you put a question forward to the voters of McHenry County for the general election on November fifth. Uh, we prepared uh information, educational information. And what I want to share with the board tonight, if you have not seen it, um, there is our presentation that's been recorded and is available on our website. So I'd like to take you there. Uh, and then of course, we can talk a little bit about some of the outreach that we've been doing.
I do want to remind you that, you know, we as a board a hundred percent uh um supported this initiative.
It's been something that the district has been working on and planning for quite some time, depending retirement of our general obligation bonds, that this timing was done. Okay, I'm going to take you to uh the district's website. Just briefly, that's one way to get into it. Uh, there is a landing page for information called Proposition Twenty Twenty Four, so anyone can go directly there. Um, and you scroll down, it'll tell you some specific stuff back to the county clerk's office of how to register to vote in person voting, vote by mail. Our official notice um that was placed and will appear on the ballot is also can be found here. Um, the video is here and then the key purposes, protecting water quality, preserve wildlife habitat and improve outdoor recreation access. And then there's a bunch of F A Q and information that can be resourced here as well. But I'm going to play the video for you here.
Residents of McHenry County are being offered a choice on the November fifth general election ballot. This proposition will increase the limiting rate for the McHenry County Conservation District and has been put forward by the Board of Trustees to ensure McHenry County's natural environment remains protected, accessible, and thriving for generations to come. Your decision will have a significant impact on our ability to protect water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation access for all. Back in nineteen seventy one, the McHenry County Conservation District was founded through a countywide referendum. The vision behind it was clear, to protect our open spaces, preserve vital wildlife habitat, and create more opportunities for environmental education and outdoor recreation. This initiative was inspired by the unique and invaluable natural landscapes of McHenry County. Over the past fifty three years, with the steadfast support of county residents, we've made significant progress. We've protected over twenty five thousand eight hundred acres of land showcasing our community's deep commitment to preserving McHenry County's natural heritage. This ongoing support has been crucial. Because of it, we've safeguarded some of the most diverse and ecologically important areas in northeastern Illinois. Places that are essential for the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the overall well-being of our community and economy. Today, more than one point two million visitors come to our sites each year, contributing significantly to our local economy. With thirty five sites open to the public for activities like paddling, picnicking, fishing, wildlife viewing and camping, and over a hundred and fifty miles of trails for bicycling, hiking, snowmobiling, cross-country skiing, and horseback riding, the Conservation District truly has something for everyone. Let me share a few stories that highlight the value of what we do. There's a family here in McHenry County who, like many of us, love spending time together outdoors. As their parents aged, it became harder to find activities everyone could enjoy and do together, especially since their parents used to be avid cyclists. They discovered the Cycling Without Age Program, which partners with the Conservation District to offer special tri-shots, three-wheeled cycles with passenger seats that let seniors experience the joy of cycling again, even if they can't pedal themselves. This story is just one example of how our commitment to inclusive outdoor recreation allows families to create lasting memories across generations. It shows the real impact of our work on the quality of life for people of all ages and abilities. On a warm spring day at Brookdale Conservation Area, a grandfather slowly walked along the path to the pond. His two grandchildren bounding around him with their camp snoopy fishing poles and tackle boxes. The excitement of their voices was contagious as they chattered about going fishing with grandpa. His smile could be seen from fifty feet away as they cast their lines into the water. This simple yet profound moment is a testament to how the Conservation District creates spaces where families can bond and pass down traditions, enriching their lives and deepening their connection to nature. On crisp autumn morning, a local resident noticed a red-tailed hawk struggling to fly near a wooded area in McHenry County. Concerned, they contacted the Conservation District, which immediately dispatched a wildlife specialist from our Wildlife Resource Center to assess the situation. The hawk had a wounded wing, likely from a collision, and was unable to hunt or care for itself. The specialist carefully captured the hawk and brought it to the Wildlife Resource Center, where it received the care it needed to heal. Over the next several weeks, the hawk's progress was monitored closely. And once it was strong enough, it was released back into the wild, where it soared through the skies once again. This story illustrates how the Conservation District's dedication to protecting wildlife ensures that even the most vulnerable animals have a chance to thrive. Whether it's rehabilitating a majestic bird of prey or safeguarding an endangered threatened species, our efforts make a real difference in preserving the natural beauty and biodiversity of McHenry County. There are so many stories like these, and I'm sure you can think of some as well. As the district gets ready to retire our general obligation bonds, McHenry County residents have a choice to make. A decision that will impact our ability to protect water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation access for all. If the proposition to increase the limiting rate is successful, it will enable us to continue and expand our conservation efforts, restoring land to optimal health and maintaining and enhancing existing conservation areas and trails for public enjoyment. The ballot proposition focuses on three main areas. One big focus is protecting the natural areas that keep McHenry County's drinking water clean. These areas filter and store water, ensuring what comes out of your tap is safe to drink. We're also working to preserve and restore places along our rivers, lakes, and streams. These efforts are crucial not only for maintaining the health and sustainability of our water sources, but also for reducing flooding. By managing these natural areas effectively, we keep water out of basements and protect homes from flood damage. McHenry County is home to some of the most diverse and unique wildlife habitats in northeastern Illinois. From our prairies and woodlands to our wetlands, these areas provide essential homes for countless species, some of which are endangered or threatened. The proposition would allow us to protect these vital habitats and enhance our restoration projects, ensuring that the rich biodiversity of our region is preserved. Our work also includes maintaining the health of these ecosystems, which are not just sanctuaries for wildlife, but also critical to our own well-being. These areas clean our air and provide natural spaces for recreation, education, and inspiration. Lastly, we're focused on improving outdoor recreation access for all. This means enhancing trails, parks, and natural areas to ensure they're welcoming and accessible, including for people with disabilities. The physical and mental health benefits of spending time outdoors are well documented, and we want to make sure those benefits are available to everyone. We're also committed to providing opportunities for both children and adults to disconnect from technology and social media, allowing them to immerse themselves in nature and develop a deeper connection with the world around them. To get a sense of what future investments could do, let's look at some examples. Since the last voter approved referendum in two thousand seven, the district has significantly expanded its habitat restoration efforts, increasing the managed and restored acreage from six thousand five hundred to fifteen thousand five hundred acres. Despite challenges like climate change and invasive species, these efforts have improved the quality and health of our ecosystems. Additional investments will enable us to maintain our current land management portfolio while expanding restoration across the remaining habitat opportunity areas throughout the county. Notable projects include the Kishawaki River Restoration and the reintroduction of Bison and Pleasant Valley Conservation Area to enhance soil health and create grassline bird habitat. Many of our bike trails were built with grass fifteen to thirty years ago and now require significant improvements. We are focused on resurfacing the prairie trail, making trail connections, and adding amenities such as wayfinding signage to ensure that these well-used and loved trails continue to provide our community with safe and enjoyable recreational opportunities. We will renovate trails at sites, including Glacial Park and the Hollows, to current standards and finish the master plan for Fox Bluff Conservation Area to provide access to the Fox River and renovate several culturally historic buildings. We also plan to update existing amenities such as parking lots, boardwalks, bridges, campgrounds, and fishing piers at various sites across the county. So what exactly are we asking for? The ballot proposition asks voters to approve a small increase in the Conservation District's tax levy rate, just zero point zero two seven percent. This is something that by law we can only do with voter approval. Here's the question you'll see on the ballot. It might look a bit complicated, but it's really straightforward. It talks about the rate increase, what the funds will be used for, and what it means for your property taxes on a hundred thousand dollar home. For a home valued at three hundred thousand, this proposition would mean just an extra two dollars and twenty five cents a month, twenty seven dollars a year. That's a small price to pay for protecting water quality, preserving wildlife habitat, and improving outdoor recreation access for all. If the proposition passes, it gives us a steady source of funding to secure the future of our natural areas and outdoor recreation amenities for generations to come. And here's the good news. As we retire voter-approved general obligation bonds, homeowners with a three hundred thousand dollar home will see a ninety four dollar reduction in their Conservation District property taxes, a forty five percent cut overall. By law, the funds will only be used for the stated purposes and will conduct an annual public audit to show exactly how the money is spent. But if the proposition doesn't pass, here's what we could be facing. Threats to the quality of our drinking water, degraded water quality in our rivers, lakes, and streams, negative impacts on wildlife habitat and natural areas, potential loss of critical habitats to development, and deteriorating site and trailer amenities. The general election is on Tuesday, November fifth. The polling places are open from six A M. to seven P M. You can also vote early, starting Thursday, September twenty sixth. And for more details, check out the McHenry County Clerk's Office to learn more about the general election and how and where to vote. Our natural areas define McHenry County's identity and quality of life. These protected areas not only preserve the county's rich natural heritage, but also provide a sanctuary for wildlife and a haven for residents and visitors alike. They are the heart of what makes our community a wonderful place to live, work, and explore. You have been given the choice to make a lasting impact on McHenry County's natural environment and to ensure they remain protected, accessible, and thriving for generations to come. While you are contemplating this important decision this fall, get outside to explore and discover the many beautiful conservation areas and trails close to home. Your vote on the November fifth general election impacts our ability to protect water quality, preserve wildlife habitat, and improve outdoor recreation access for all. On behalf of the Board of Trustees and dedicated staff and volunteers, we thank you for taking the time to learn more about the McHenry County Conservation District and this important ballot proposition. We hope this information helps you make an important decision in the upcoming election. Feel free to share this information with neighbors, family, and friends. For more details, visit mccd.me forward slash proposition twenty twenty four. Thank you for your time and attention and enjoy the wide open spaces and places that matter in McHenry County. Your vote matters.
And no animals who are harmed or hurt.
Hollywood started to do their voiceover.
I know, I know.
Have we been nominated for an Emmy yet?
It's amazing what we can do with technology. So we have great script writing with the staff and using of course photography that the district has, as well as many of our site visitors that are out and about that share through our Finder Wild program and that that are willing to uh give back to the district. So again, we're hopeful, though the key piece is, is its information. And we want to make sure that everybody has the information. And so whatever their choice may be on November fifth, that we've done our part to make sure that they have the information in their hands. So this is on our website. It is available and we are going about and speaking with different groups, uh, taking calls as they come in. And we'll continue to do that until on November fifth. It's a lot of, uh, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to have a conversation with everybody.
Good job. Okay, I hope we're going to keep moving along. Uh, they are taking a motion to uh recess for the purpose of a public hearing on the twenty twenty four property tax extension, truth and. on the 2024 Property Tax Extension, Truth, and Taxation Ordinance. If we have first, the second. I mean, roll call, please.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Christie Lady.
Yes.
Christie Zerick.
Yes.
Secretary Wazork.
Yes.
Trezor Zimmerman.
Yes.
Christie Zeller.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes.
With that being said, a motion carries. We'll go into public comments, 6.3 over the property tax extension. Three minutes per person. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak?
My name is Rick Luke, and I live west of Huntley. I do not understand taking good farm ground out of production. I understand running heavy equipment for 40-some years. You don't have to pay the whole world, and the wetlands filter the water and everything else like that. But you guys could make all kinds of money renting the good ground out instead of leaving it growing weeds, which you tell me right here from people, this is grassland. Well, it's weeds because you're missing their key ingredient to a grassland is either high-density grazing or millions of buffalo stopping the weeds down and eating everything and moving on, and your grass grows. You're wanting more money is chump change. But see, everybody has their hand out. The school district, the libraries, everybody. And then it all gathers together in ridiculous property taxes. And that's all I have to say as far as just wanting more, more, more. It's a government agency that they all duplicate themselves. This man, and I applaud him for his enthusiasm about wetlands, but I've been involved extensively in wetland production, different water depths, and whatever. $100,000 in seed blows my mind because you have a seed bank in there of thousands and thousands. Here you found a piece of wood that was, what, 11,000 years old? You know, so to spend $100,000 on seed to redo a wetland, the seed bank is there. It just needs to be at the right, like the frog dirt and the different levels, the water levels that you create. And then in your process of buying these farms and land, and this is not, this is just me, it seems like you concentrate on the waterways and the wetlands. What are you guys gonna do when the beaver are out of control? We already know that the conservation areas that have beaver problems that back up in other people's property is a no response. Can we go in there and dig the beaver dams out and kill the beaver? No. And that's wrong. It's flat wrong. It's everybody with their hand out. Learn to do what the taxpayer does and gets by with what they got and what they make. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dan Ziller, also from the Huntley area. I know a few of you in here, former president of McHenry County Park. A couple times on, so if they're gonna have questions, we can do that. I am very glad to see that your taxing will be going down with taxpayers of the town here in the near future. That is, should be your number one priority every year you're doing your living, is how you're going to avoid taking the taxpayers, going after the taxpayers who are earning money. A comment that needs to be made is that I would hope the agriculture community would hope that none of this money is going to go towards buying more farm. You feel you've got all you need right now. Our young farmers are struggling to get started and to grow their operations, and they do not need a government entity flush with taxpayer money competing against them to buy these farm. My last comment would be, we have an administration in Washington who seems to think the only way we can run this country energies-wise is with solar and wind power. That goes hand in hand in conservation. In my opinion, probably many beats. It's a very lucrative business. You guys got a lot of open land that you can put solar farms on and wind turbines if that happens to come to this county. With the money that's generated there, you should not be having to go back to the taxpayers. They ask for reprimand and nothing. So I would hope that you start considering dealing with some of these solar farms as they go forward here. There's a lot of money to be made there, and it goes hand in hand with conservation. So please, take those matters into consideration. Thank you.
Anyone else in there? Kevin?
All right.
I'm on Zoom. I'm on Zoom. I'm not sure if you're taking Zoom comments.
We are. You're welcome. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Hey, my name is Dennis Dreher. I'm a resident of Bull Valley. I am a very, very strong supporter of this initiative. I'm a regular user of district properties. I bike, I hike, I paddle, I fish, I cross-country ski in snowshoe. And you guys do a great job with the resources. I would say, if anything, you probably have a reputation doing more with less. But the reality is, and I think most of you know this, maybe not some of the newer board members, but McHenry County Conservation District has the fewest resources, both in terms of dollars and staff per acre of any district or forest preserve in the region. So I think this is long overdue, and as we know, regardless, this is going to be a tax cut. So like I say, if anything, I would support a bigger initiative. And I think this is a great start. And again, a big supporter, and I will see you at the polls in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else out there?
I don't see anybody. I don't see anybody else online.
Go ahead and take it. Kevin, who do you like?
Hello, everyone. Kevin Ivers. Here as a resident of McHenry County, Belma Road in Greenwood. And I promised my daughter I would be briefed so I can pick her up from swimming practice. So at any rate, thank you for the opportunity to speak. You know, much of what I would say was well-presented through that video that was just presented. And so we all have these experiences, but I can just say that through the decades now, for me, for my family, as our kids have grown, the different ways that the district has impacted not only our lives, but the lives of our family, of generations, and of the communities that we've been a part of now here in McHenry County are so profound. And as I have gained a greater understanding of, in some respects, how fragile the balance of everything is within these sites, within our community, in terms of the ecological and wildlife habitat, the more time goes on, the more I pick up on that. And, you know, I see the benefits and the fruits of what happens when we put research into play and we put our practical experiences into play. And so as sites become restored, I volunteered with my family at different workdays with the district, with the Land Conservancy. Grew up running and playing through the district sites. Now it's become for me more to see the value that it provides for our county. And so I think about too what the district asks in terms of its amenities to all of us who gather there. The impacts on our economic realities, how we drive tourism. So many different pieces. And so in terms of the wildlife, seeing things come, seeing things coming here more frequently, seeing the sandhill cranes landing in the backyard or just out in the way, hearing the coyotes at night, right hearing about the rusty patch bubblebees, seeing those different endangered species in the creeks. And then, of course, in terms of our water, watching the volatility here on a dry time like now. If we get a big rain next week, watching how quick those monitoring wells will show the water increase. My gosh, it's connected fast. And so how can we protect it? So anyhow, I'm looking forward to supporting the referendum, the proposition in November. I appreciate the opportunity to do that here in a general election. I think that will get a good pulse. It's a good opportunity for our county. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak for you here tonight.
Thank you.
We also received a link to.
We have a couple of public comments that were received by email. Go ahead and read the comment. I'm not indicating or anything to that, I'm just giving information. First one here I have is, "I'm Dave Brandt, and I've served two terms as trustee for MCCD. MCCD is a public service agency who protects McHenry County's open space, provides outdoor spaces for enjoyment by all. We are only as good as our people who think I'll do a wonderful job, but there's not enough time in the day. And this is why I'll be voting in favor for the MCCD referendum. MCCD protects over 25,000 acres of valuable open space and puts new people to restore the habitats, protect all visitors, and maintain the infrastructure and education, everyone on the value, everyone on the value of our work. Frankly, we need more people. In the past, we protected land because we must get it while it's available. But now it's time to get more people to handle the workload, and MCCD's tax rate will still be reduced. Thank you, Dave Brandt, from Hunter Lake, Illinois." Second one from Martha and Andy Carver. "Thank you for allowing my public comment on the agenda. I'm ready in support of the 2024 Property Tax Extension, Truth, and Taxation Ordinance. One of the main reasons why we stayed in McHenry County for the last 30 years is MCCD. It is a source of pride that my husband and I support the organization, its mission, and while we have volunteered for many years to give back and be a part of what I consider the jewel of McHenry County. As principal of a nonprofit, independent school, and entrepreneur, I fully understand and live every day the need to fund, invest, and grow responsibly. MCCD does that. Communities that have recreational opportunities, open space attracting young families, these are the facts. People want to live where there are open space agencies that honor all constituencies and welcome them. MCCD does just that. MCCD are leaders in the Midwest of exceptional physical stewardship, organizational excellence, and environmental practices. Our family is of retirement age, and we will proudly support the MCCD at the ballot box for future generations. We respectfully submit it, Martha and Andy Carver." Anybody else?
I don't see anybody else online. I'm seeing raising hand. Anybody else wishing to make comment?
All right, with none heard, I think we're gonna consider a motion to go back to closed public hearing. We can be in a regular meeting. Anybody wanna take the motion? I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Christie Zerick.
Yes.
Secretary Wazork.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Trezor Zimmerman.
Yes.
Christie Zeller.
Yes.
Christie Lady.
Yes.
President Don.
Yes.
Okay, we're in the regular meeting now, and we'll go back to new business. And we're gonna review the meeting agenda for the 24th meeting. Anybody have any questions on that? For the regular meeting, if it's settled, or that's just a regular meeting agenda. Any questions?
Want me to highlight anything?
Yeah, when, are we considering the consent agenda?
This is the consent agenda, yes. So you've got previous minutes, treasurer's report, accepting the financial report that was provided this evening by Seekage. You've got the filing of our public funds annual statement.
Gratification.
We have change orders of the projects that are in the work. We've got opportunities for professional development for staff, grant application for the Required Dilemma Safety Act for body cameras. MOU with the McHenry County Conservation Foundation that we discussed at our joint meeting. So this increases that for another three years. The professional services agreement you heard about earlier this evening, awarding the bids for our Hollows Lake Atwood Access Program and the demolition project there, abatement removal, so several bid awards. And then our energy bid, the district did go ahead and with working collaboratively with a consultant with our bids in a different formula, index pricing, to get better pricing set for the year, so that's for your consideration. And that represents everything on the consent agenda. As far as the regular meeting, you've got the Truth and Taxation Ordinance to be presented for the 2024 lobby. And then also, as discussed as part of the proposition, you have a resolution declaring your intent to abate taxes for the period of 2024 and 2025 to pay debt service on outstanding bonds. And so that's in front of you. So that, again, ensures that that net impact, should the proposition be successful, in essence, there's no impact. And then you've got the acquisition piece that you'll discuss in executive session. And that's pretty much it for today.
Good. No questions on those items? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to 8.0. Have the executive directors report.
Let's see here, just a couple things I'm gonna pull my file, yes, I did have.
Sure.
I sent out to many of you events and activities, you know, it's that time with partners, et cetera. So again, I'll continue to connect with me. I think I'm at least getting several trustees to attend with me to several events. Also, from the foundation, there was a request that went out this afternoon for the board to be invited to assist with some donor calls. Should that be, and should we thank our donors that have given so graciously as part of our work with the foundation, and that's on November 16th from 10 to 2. I think it would be nice to contribute some time towards that. You've seen, we've completed the Finder Wild. We will have a report to you on that particular program. But there is a new brochure that is out. Again, we were getting a lot of requests for our valuable Discover Your District Guide, and that guide is, you know, it's costly to print. So the district's efforts to save money and be able to get information out. The marketing team did rebrand this, so there's a nice one-piece that we're able to place out and have available. So I thought that was a great innovation and a way to continue to get information out, but do it very cost-effectively. We also then, let's see, other communication. Last evening, we were at the McHenry County Storm Water, not Storm Water, McHenry County Water Forum. Great to see many of you there. I just want to give a shout out to the county. Thank you for providing that program every year. I thought the speakers did great. Scott did a great job and all the things.
That's great for them.
Yeah, it just was awesome and great information and really tied into the impact of our natural spaces, but also just what we talked about, climate and the rapid extreme events that we're experiencing. You know, that things are not the same, and they continue to accelerate here, so we're being very proactive.
Yeah, two guest speakers.
There were three speakers, yeah, that were provided there and did a great job of going through all of the different areas relative to soil erosion, water quality, and then the changing climate. But that was a hurry. I think that pretty much that I have as far as a wrap-up. So again, thank you for everyone that's been sharing your time to get out and help us share information about the proposition. We really appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you for all and every answer.
Everybody's been helping to share. We just want to make sure everybody has information.
Great. Okay, we'll keep moving along. Public comments number two. Anybody out there on anything?
I do not see anyone.
With that being said, then I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session. But to see five purchase is real. To C5, purchase this real property, then to C21, the post-essential notes, the open wounds act. I asked, yes, for early on that.
Okay, so it's removed and we need a second. Second, we want a second. You want your vote?
Tracy Zeller.
Yes.
Tracy Leyke.
Yes.
Tracy Zurich.
Yes.
Secretary Wazork.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Yes.
Treasurers Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Down.
Yes.
We'll reconvene immediately following executive session, then solve it. We'll have roll call, please.
President Down.
Here.
Vice President Everard.
Here.
Treasurers Zimmerman.
Here.
Secretary Wazork.
Here.
Tracy Leyke.
Yes.
And Tracy Zeller.
Here.
Okay, may acting motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Second by Sean.
All right. Tracy Zeller.
Yes.
Tracy Leyke.
Yes.
Secretary Wazork.
Yes.
Vice President Everard.
Thank you for the accommodations. I vote yes.
Treasurers Zimmerman.
Yes.
President Down.
Yes.
Six forty-seven. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.